Scheduled meeting to order if you'd all stand and do the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, we have a call.
Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would move we adopt the agenda as presented.
Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The consent agenda tonight involves the approval of minutes, consider payment of bills including late pays and preauthorization of payroll, insurance, utilities, officials, and automatic payments, and to adopt amended policy five three zero five, classified professional and support staff work agreements and compensation. On second reading. Who is to approve the consent agenda as read?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will adopt the agenda. So we'll move into our roundtable and tonight we have our good sportsmanship award going to Alexis Taylor. So Alexis, can you come up and give us about fifteen minutes of?
Yeah, just to perform speech and?
No, no, you don't hurry.
No pressure.
Fifteen minutes is it. So reading the description of the good sportsmanship, there were also, there was a girl from Star Valley as well, but both of these girls were such great examples of good sports on the court. They were good sports throughout the sets. They're always encouraging and cheering for their team members. Alexa, or I wasn't surprised to look at the program after the game and find that Alexis was a senior. She was for sure a leader on the court. She led her young team members with such a great spirit. Submitted by Pauline Fackrell and Bill Thompson.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you for representing our school.
So what we want is you to be a great leader.
So you've used up one minute. Give us another fourteen. Oh?
You know what, he's, he's got a bet going on, on end time, so.
No, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome, we're proud of you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here, family.
Thanks for coming.
Brody, do you have anything?
And now you're off to the next event?
Yes.
Awards banquet for golf.
Nice.
Alright.
Thank you.
Kind of a tough act to follow, but Jenny, you wanna talk to us about food service?
No, it's a half hour.
Everybody but Bruce.
I said she didn't have to be a friend.
You'd have to be a half hour.
She were her friends.
She only got four minutes, so.
When I'm at home, I don't even talk that long for the whole day. I was thinking on my way in about how, the jobs that you take that you do not know what you're getting into and all that it isn't involved. And I'm like, had I known I had to do this, I may have thought a little longer and a little harder. But in all honesty, despite the challenges and the stresses, I have enjoyed the challenge and will continue to hang in there and keep, keep fighting. So, um, the last time I shared with you, I had a dream. Depending on the budget at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, I thought it would be awesome to have the food truck wrapped in artwork provided by the students. Teachers had their agendas and lesson plans made out and struggled to add or modify it. There was simply just not enough time or interest. Colton sent an image created by AI. Having never used AI, I was very impressed. After numerous adjustments and ribbons of emails shared between a few of us, I finally got tired of it and just made a decision and moved forward. The kids loved the elementary Wolverine and easily recognized the food truck when we would pull into the various locations of the food ser- for the summer food program. And I'm sure you have all seen the truck, but just in case. Kind of went with elementary because there's a lot of, I see things around town that are the, the high school Wolverine. And so, a lot of our younger kids, the elementary kids participate in the summer food program, so we went with this.
That's awesome.
Speaking of the fu- summer food program, we jumped right into the program on May twenty-seventh, after school let out and ran the program five days a week. We served our last meal on June twenty-seventh, serving a total of four thousand three hundred and eighty-one meals during this five-week program. And had people calling, wondering if we were gonna continue. Next year, we may run a little longer. I felt like Career Center needed a facelift in the kitchen, so I stepped back from my computer for a couple of days this summer to give the serving line a facelift. I felt white walls were too starchy and sterile and wanted a more modern look without breaking the bank. I painted one of the walls on the serving line black and strung LED lights that do all kinds of fancy things around the perimeter to make it more fun and inviting. So there's.
That looks great.
So those lights change colors and flash and. Then, at the beginning of the year, I had two cooks from Jackson School that needed a place to call home. I was able to use them at Career Center due to a staff member out for long term and then my production cook who had decided not to return after maternity leave. With Frontier now at Jackson, I opened that kitchen back up and moved one of the cooks back to her old stomping grounds and she's very excited about that. Then there was an opening in Aspen and I moved the other cook over there. We are still fully staffed and have two subs who work regularly, quite regularly.
That's awesome.
Yeah. So, and they wanna work more and more and I'm just like, I don't have a job. We have planned and prepared five thousand six hundred and forty servings of chili for next week's thankful and grateful chili luncheon. This replaced the traditional Thanksgiving dinner, which will allow my staff to enjoy the upcoming holidays without a turkey hatred. Healthy Pro, I talked to you about Healthy Pro. We had purchased this, um, cloud-based menu program. And so we have that up and running. Healthy Pro is a cloud-based menu planning software that aids school nutrition professionals to plan nutritional compliant meals in schools. It was designed by food service professionals and helps simplify compliance, saves times, and makes administrative reviews, which I will have this year. Easier with built-in documentation and color-coded menus. Change is and has been hard, but the more our department uses it, the easier it gets. And overall, we agree it's a great program. And I'll just show you a little bit of Healthy Pro. So you have to go in and make every ingredient in the recipe an ingredient to create that recipe, so it's very time-consuming. And so, that's what I did spend a lot of summer doing. And here on the, this is kind of the cook side of it, but it'll tell us how many meals we've prepared. It will tell us like our favorite foods. As you can see here, hot dog on a bun is popular, nachos with cheese, our least favorite things. And so then, once I publish this, and I'm gonna just take you, I'm gonna jump ahead. I also, let me go ahead and tell you this. The webpage, I spent several days working on creating a new food service webpage. It is now Nutritional Services, is easier to navigate with links for Facebook, menus, payments, free and reduce applications, and et cetera. So this is the page. So if you come up here and you go to menus now, and we can pick, let's say Aspen Park. They can click on their school and then come in here. And here's our menu for November. So then parents can come in here and here's the menu. It also has QR codes, codes for payments. And, um, this mouse is a little touchy. Anyway, so here's our menus. A lot of things are hidden. If a parent has a student or a child that has a medical disability or diabetes or something and they would, or nurses, they can come in here on build a meal. And you can select, or you have to go to the right date. You can select the date that you're looking at and it will tell you the carbs in that item. If the kids choose. Let's do pizza. So it'll tell you the carbs, the calories, the fats. So they can go in there and create the menu themselves, so their kids kinda know what, what they need to have or should have that day. So it's, it's been challenging, but it's, I think it is an excellent program and we are enjoying it more and more as we use it, so.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
That's, I really liked that.
So then our budget, we appear to be right on track with our budget as we know the cost of hamburger, or as the cost of food continues to increase. Last year, we were able to purchase forty pounds of hamburgers for two dollars and fifty cents a case. This year, we're paying a hundred and eighty. So. We're still on track though. It's kinda crazy right now. Farm to school encourages us to incorporate local foods into the national school lunch program. My kitchen manager thought it would be a great idea to serve fresh corn on the cob. I seriously questioned if she had lost her sanity, but agreed to order the six hundred ears from the Anderson's eighteen ninety farms. On the day the truck rolled in with all this corn, staff and students rushed in to help shuck over six hundred ears of corn in thirty-five minutes.
Thirty, in thirty-five minutes?
Yes.
Wow.
It was amazing and I had lost a lot of sleep about that. So, um, we were super proud to support our Wyoming farmers and give our students a taste of locally grown goodness. So if I go back to this page and I click Facebook, I'll just kinda show you, we had some fun at the Career Center serving. Maybe I will not show you because. So I don't know if we can hear this. On the cob. So, just some links there with that.
That's really cool.
So we have a, you have a very dedicated team in food service. They work extremely har- hard and are committed to the district staff and students. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve, to allow us to serve in this capacity. We look forward to what the future holds as we continue feeding students healthy nutritious meals. And we would like to thank you for your devotion, dedicated leadership, vision, and support for our staff and students. God bless.
Very good. Thank you, my goodness.
Thank you.
I know.
This would be happening if you weren't doing it.
No, I remember you saying how labor-intensive that was gonna be and the fact that it looks like that.
It will be an ongoing project.
It's a living, little living world there, but that's really cool. And I, I can vouch for that spaghetti and meatballs is one of their favorites because I've been volunteering down at Willow Creek. And man, the kids love spaghetti and meatball, they. They just really do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Jenny.
Thanks Jenny.
Appreciate it.
Okay. We'll go on to board members and staff. Ally, we'll start with you. You gotta have something cool to say.
Well, I just wanna.
That's Ally?
Yeah, it's me. I don't have COVID. I had a test, but I'm, I have a cold, so I don't wanna spread it to you guys, that's why I'm wearing the mask. And I wanted to be here.
I think you could've decorated the mask however.
Oh yeah. Put some smiley faces or some flowers or something. Or like a frowny face. Sorry?
I thought it was a holdup.
No, no, I just wanna let you know, I'm, you know, I just don't wanna get you guys sick.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
But that's it, that's all I have.
Nothing for me tonight. Okay. Christina?
Nothing for me.
Oh, you guys are so fast.
Now, now you're gonna encourage him, I'll look at him.
He's working out a little notebook.
Let's see here.
Got so many things, he's gonna have to take notes.
Dealing with, listening to food service, I was at a meeting this last weekend. Let's see, it was a board member from Newcastle was talking about how they got, oh, five steers or cows.
Very thing.
From, uh, uh, four H. And, uh, they, uh, you know, and then, you know, it's a smaller district, so they, they can get a lot of meat for meals at that size of a district. And so then Douglas, the, the board member from Douglas, they got four and a couple of pigs. And it seems like there's a lot of districts that are supplementing.
Shoshone does as well.
And they're, none of them are in the federal program.
That's right.
That sort of was defunded. So it's just, you know, community and state-based. So that, that was an interesting conversation about, uh, uh, food service and, and the things that are going on there. So this meeting was the Wyoming School Board Association Board of Directors meeting. And it was, you know, we're getting ready for conference, so a lot of it was about speakers and, and the, you know, getting the programs ready and, and, uh, the resolutions. There's only three resolutions. It started out, there's only two resolutions. And I made a motion to split one. I, I think, have you got it yet?
Got it, but haven't really.
Haven't.
Read it.
Yeah. So it started out, the number two was a resolution to try to process people that had a criminal, you know, a, a employee who had a criminal, uh, charge against them. And that you wouldn't have to put them on administrative leave and then pay them until they're found guilty or not guilty or the charges are dropped. Cheyenne's the one who brought it because they have had the experience of having a employee string that out for two years. So it's, it's a, it's a thing. But it turned out that, reading deeper into that resolution, it was also, uh, so that if you had a teacher who was being let go for cause, that you, there'd be a deadline and so that it did not linger on and on and on too. So when I, we realized that it had both of those elements in it, we split it so that it, one is the criminal one and one is the for cause. Now, we've had for cause on our own here and it's, you, you, have you, I think you, Lynette?
Yes.
Been on the board, but we've had.
We had one just.
So.
Last year, right?
Yeah. So, we did, was, did it linger?
It was pretty quick.
It was, it was quick.
It was kinda to get quick. So anyhow, most of them, you.
A year maybe?
So, so most of them run, you, they, they go for cause. Then they're put on administrative leave at that point. And so they're not teaching for us and they then request, ask for a hearing. I don't remember one last year for a hearing. And then, then, so then we, uh, you know, you have to go to get a hearing officer. So that's the Office of Administrative Process that you have to go through. And you have forty-five days to, to do that. So in that forty-five days, they'll ca- come back and say, hey, we don't have a opening for six months. So it's then, that forty-five days is then extended six months. That's pretty much, but I don't think any of you guys, maybe you and you have experienced that. I know that last year we did not experience that.
No, we didn't.
So that's what I'm talking about.
Oh yeah, that.
So they want to just put the.
She in the forty-five?
Hundred days. So that then if they're, you know, if they're not found guilty or the hearing judge says that, ah, you shouldn't fire this person, let this person go, then you have to pay them the monies after the hundred days until, so you, we'll still have to pay. But if you don't, you, the monies are then free and clear. And it takes two statutes to make that happen. So it's a pretty big lift to make a resolution like that.
So is the hundred da- days changing that forty-five day requirement?
No, no, not the forty-five days, just at a hundred days, you can stop, you can start, you can stop paying them.
Oh my gosh, that'd be amazing.
And then, uh, and from that point on, it's tracked.
Okay.
And, you know, it's then in reserve.
And then you could ha- pay back pay if need be.
And back pay at the end.
Oh wow.
So that would make, you know, so that, you know, you don't have two years of.
Yeah.
That you, that, and then they're found guilty and you pay them for this whole time.
And, um, the attorneys for the WEA.
Well, that's another story.
Well, they, they drag it out because.
Well, yeah, you know.
You know, as long as you're getting paid, we're gonna, we're gonna keep going and keep moving the hearing out and they always play that game.
It's always, it always takes six months. It's, that's why I knew we didn't have a hearing last year.
No, no, but it's.
Cause that's the process that usually happens. Is that this teacher or the administrator or whoever says, no, I want a hearing. And then, then you have to get a hearing officer.
Right.
And then, then it's after that, so it's, you know, it's, it can be longer than six months.
And six months.
So that was, that, that was the resolution. So the, the other resolution was getting paid early, uh, on, uh, special ed. Such, which is a re, it's, it comes back around. This is one that's been here for, you know, like a small district. Oh yeah.
That does.
You get a, you get a student that is gonna cost you three hundred thousand dollars to, uh, do their, in a, you know, a small district, it, it could bankrupt them.
Absolutely.
You know, it could make them so that you can't hire a, a, a teacher, you know, or two teachers because you're, you're, you're booked up.
And gone for minis, you get two or three kids.
And you, you plan for, you plan for, but you don't plan, you, you can only plan so far in a small district. We can observe it a little bit better. A Cheyenne or a Neutrona can observe it fairly easy because they have such large reserves. But, so it, this is one that just keeps coming back. So those are the three re- resolutions that you, as you get them and read about them, you'll have to make a decision at some point. We have some good, uh, people coming in for, uh, uh, to be speakers, so that'll be good for us. So. I don't know, have, have you, so we, we have this, these new, uh, graduate, you know, how a graduate should look. And, uh, so now we have this new, we have our standards and now we have seven, what are they called?
Profiles.
Profiles.
No, no, it's, it's in profiles of graduate.
Yeah, it is, they're, um.
But it's, uh, competencies.
Yep.
And there's, they've sort of left it up to the districts to see how you're going to find the different things that are going to tell you that they made that competency. Each district can be different and so there's no equity in it. It's, it's a big old hole that they created. And we let it happen and, uh, you know, it was such a great idea. And so now it's on top of standards that these competencies that we now have to measure. So we know how to measure the standards. Those are pretty straightforward. But measuring competencies is going to be a task.
It's pretty abstract.
Well, it can't be.
It can't, well, I mean, well, it's like.
You, you let it happen.
Well, you know, I know I did, no, no.
No, you didn't.
Not all of us, no.
It was such a good idea.
It was a great idea.
It is a good idea. But, so the worry is that, okay, that these competencies are then turned over to the WDE. They're the ones who control it. They're the ones who make the rule after the policy is created. So that's a battle we might have to fight on that one, which was interesting to listen to too. Other things that came up. Uh, what was it? I'm trying to find my. Grad requirements. So this, the corporations meeting that's coming up, there's a, for the Wyoming School Board Association, it's kind of a, a big deal because they're trying to now limit lobbying, lobbying by, uh, tax entities. So, you know, if the WD, Wyoming School Board Association, and then the definition of lobbying, for the most part, we try not to lobby as much as give information. And because we are a five, you know, we are a nonprofit and so there's rules. And so a lot of the stuff we do is not lobbying. But during the legislature, we do a little bit of lobbying. And so does the clam and so does the commissioners group, so does the firemen's group, so do all groups. Even us going down there, maybe wouldn't, would be able to pay for our room or, uh, food while we were there. We'd have to do it on our own dime. Just because the language is a little tweaky, but I think they may have fixed it already. So that's one that we should watch, uh, because it limits our ability to speak to them through our profession.
Corporation commission actually going forward with that?
It's on the agenda for this next meeting, yes. They let it die in session, now it's one of those zombie bills that have come back to life.
I went to Lander to testify on that and never got to.
That happens.
With SWAM there and.
Oh yeah, they, they had seven hundred mayors and, you know, nobody from any school district.
So it's, it's come back around and it's on this next meeting they're gonna talk about. So I know that the, our let, you know, right now, the, uh, recalibration is going on and we're getting to hear what the bright boys think about us. But you gotta remember that they are just the bright boys that always say good things about education and what they, we need to do. The real meeting that you need to go to is the meeting in January because that's when legislators somehow went in their ear and then it comes out their mouth much differently than, uh, was presented. So that's the meeting that we really have to key on. You can say, well, they, they said, but it's not they that makes the recommendation, it's that committee. So it's great to hear what they're talking about right now, but you have to wait till January to find out how it's being interpreted by the people that are gonna vote on it. Just, uh, other than that, my god, that seventy to nothing, was that a record or what?
No, seventy-four would've been a record. But.
Didn't we play third, the, uh, freshmen against them also?
Yeah, actually, well, no, the freshmen, there were no freshmen on the field, but it was, but it was definitely the third string.
Sitting there with the, uh, uh, our president is Mike Mann, uh, and he's from Rollins and he's also the chairman of their board, so. Hey, it's forty-two to nothing at halftime.
That probably.
And so, it was, it was a lot of fun that evening and, uh, the next breakfast, but I feel, you know. It's, it's a tough, tough time in Rollins for football.
They're, they're struggling, yeah.
I was loving it in prayer circle at the end.
They are, they, I visited a little bit with the Froch, Frochmore coach.
Two, two years of pretty much.
They've had a struggle.
Other than that, I think, well, my granddaughter, uh, got a second at, uh, the, uh, conference diving and fit, got a fifth, uh, place, so with a second for the swim team, so that was.
That was awesome.
But, uh, that's, thank you. I gave you your fifteen minutes.
You did?
Yeah, I don't have near that.
Jody will double it here.
I will, are you ready? Are you got the timer on? Okay. Actually, I guess, um, what I would start out with is I did go to Casper for the recal- recalibration training. There was Terry and Lynette and Lori and I, and I got a lot out of, out of those sessions.
Yeah, oh Terry, I thought you meant Terry.
Terry Cantrell and, and, yeah, Lynette and Lori and I. And that was very interesting. I, I always enjoy the conversation with, with other districts, other boards, because you learn so much. And when you talked about the farm to fork or farm to table thing at the PJP in Lander, that was actually brought up and mentioned there as well, that they had purchased some livestock and, and had gone away from the government programming because of food waste is, was the primary thing. So, because currently as. Um, so, because currently as it stands, you know, you, there's a proportionate size for each of the kids and things like that. So I did do that, um, went to the, one of the windiest football games on Monday was a Frochmore game. Um, we found out that our kids really can play real football because my, my husband and my son said, real football is played in a windstorm. Because you don't pass the ball as much if, if you're thinking, um. But it was fun to watch them. I, I, like I said, Carl mentioned two, then Rollins, we played, that was against Lander, we came out on top. There was no score in that game until the fourth quarter. No score at all. And we, we came away with a seventeen to nothing win in that, um, and my.
The Broncos, that's what they did.
Yeah, and, and then my grandson, my grandson plays, uh, for the freshman football and things like that. And then we went Friday. He had a two-thirty game. They, they cut it down so that they only played a half because they are struggling. Rollins, uh, have eleven kids, eleven kids for that Frochmore game. And, um, so I commend that, that staff and those students because there's nothing harder than working all week long and then coming to be, to face the day and knowing that you're at a disadvantage. And, and, and some of the kids, some of, because they're struggling with that program, then your fundamentals aren't as sound as other places, but, um, they still, still was fun to watch. It was nice to see the sportsmanship on the field. Um, senior night for, I feel like a lot of my grandchildren, but my grandson for golf, um, had, they had senior night for all the fall sports at five-thirty. Um, and that was a kind of a revelation. I happened to pop down to Aspen earlier that day. Um, and as I was walking up to the front door, it dawned on me, tonight's senior night. And Landon started kindergarten at Aspen. And so it was kind of a full circle moment. I was like, wow, can't believe this is actually gonna occur, but that was, that was a fun evening and, um, for everyone, um, and then they had the, the football team, of course, at half. Did their, did their thing there. Um, I'm trying to rethink what else I wanted to say. Let me look at this. I think that's pretty much it. I, you know, I said, we enjoying the fall colors, enjoying the fall weather. Don Julian used to say that my, you know, that you're not really playing football until the geese fly. And that's because generally that's around playoff time. And he's right. It's pretty cool that our kids are gonna be playing, hosting their first, um, their first, uh, game here on Friday on Halloween. Um, my son, when he coached out at Wind River, um, made it to the playoffs. They didn't have their lights up yet, so they played, Wind River came into Riverton and played at Tonkin on Halloween. And the only reason I remember that is cause my grandson, who I went for senior night, was dressed as a flying monkey. So I don't know why that, you know, but that's the way it is. And, um, so I wish them luck. Um, I wish the volleyball team luck with, with what they're doing. Our swimmers have had a, are doing fabulous. They're doing fantastic things. Um, and which I really always like. And then I will be back at Willow tomorrow at lunch to do lunch duty. That's what I look forward to. So that's it for me.
So I've, as, as always, I've followed some people around. Um, I did the advocacy training in Cheyenne last week and I thought it provided us with some really good points to, you know, be able to visit with our legislators going forward about, you know, some things that, that, just to think through those things and to think about some things that impact uh, our education programs and, and the schools, uh, statewide, not just Riverton, but just making sure that we're looking at education as a whole, so we're not just representing us and we're looking beyond that. Uh, just, Ryan Farmer always does a phenomenal job. It was, it was just amazing. He just does a great job and he's always very interesting to listen to. It went by too fast. Um, I had probably the same cold that, th- that Ellie had. I, I still have a little bit of hoarseness, but, um, so I didn't go to the football game, but I watched it on YouTube and that is my alma mater. Rollins High School is my alma mater and so that was, I was really glad there was a prayer circle at the end, I have to say, cause that really kind of hurt my heart a little bit to see them lose that badly, but I think we all kind of felt that way, you know, somewhat too. It was, it was kind of hard, including my, my grand, my grandson that, that plays as well, so, um. But that, you know, got to watch that, um, attend that grateful lunch, uh, next week, the luncheon, uh, at Aspen. I've got two grandkids there, which is kind of nice that we have all of those, you know, all the kids at the same place. We get to go to one location, get to have lunch with both of them, so that will be awesome. And I did go to see the, the League of Women Voters when the governor, Governor Gordon came last week and talked a lot about the election laws that are coming up and some things that we need to pay attention to and, um, it was very nice to hear, uh, public servants speak with decorum and not trash anybody, even though they kind of set him up to be able to do that. He did not. He didn't take advantage of that. And so it was just nice to hear somebody that gave really good information and uh, really looked at things from not just one side. He, you know, applauded people for bringing up points that needed to be addressed. And he ju- I thought he did a very good job and I, I enjoyed that. And there was a really nice group of people that was, that were there as well. Um, and then the only other thing is, um, gymnastics meets start on Saturday, so we'll start following our little Lady May, her gymnastics meets, um, starting Saturday, so that, that's always fun. Watch that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Lynette?
Um, I thought the advocacy training was, was very informative, but I was very disappointed in the number of people that were there.
I was too.
There were fifteen of, fifteen board members was all.
That was it.
And four of them were us. So in that respect, I was disappointed, but the information was amazing and the networking was great. Um, and, and the weather was nice, so that's always a positive.
That was nice.
Um, we had a Northwest Bocees meeting last Wednesday night and we should be getting the annual report shortly. So when it comes, I'm sure Jada will shoot it out to us. And if I get it ahead of time, I'll send it. Um, and we're trying to look at ways, um, Jackie's being very proactive and trying to look at ways to maybe expand the services and the offerings that Northwest Bocees has, so keeping in mind, we understand how expensive having a student there can be. So, um, that's all I have for the moment.
I did, if I might, um, I will be attending the Bochees meeting at six P M on November third. That was the other thing that was on my list that I forgot, so I'll be doing that.
Oh, I do have something to say. We do need to have, uh, I think we have maybe one more meeting before the Bocees. Uh, and we're talking about reorganizing and I don't just wanna have my thoughts on it down the road, so we need to probably put it on a discussion.
Okay.
So that, uh, cause it, it may just turn into a pass through with very minimal administrative and maybe, you know, maybe not even a place, maybe just a, I don't know, but. So we should talk about it.
For the next, for the next meeting.
Yeah, cause I think it's the nineteenth. The nineteenth.
Could you put that on the agenda?
Cause it, it's something I just don't wanna put my own voice on. It needs to be.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for saying voice Bocees.
You're welcome. I just had the same thought.
I don't really have anything for this evening.
Terry too.
Terry too.
Terry too.
Or also.
Terry also.
Well, we got to go down to Casper twice. That was enjoyable. First one was for the advocacy for our, uh, reconciliation and that was very informative. I really enjoyed it, but I was like you disappointed that there was, I was very proud of, of us though as, as a board. We had four of us down there. That was, we were the largest group representing, but we learned so much and it was, it was a good thing to take in all that knowledge, cause it's accumulation of the, of the four weeks of Zoom, learning, learning how to, how we get our, our money from the, uh, taxes from the state. And then, uh, last Tuesday, we got to go down and, and talk, uh, about our rec board to the, uh, what's that boards called?
The audit department.
Audit department, yes. And so that was interesting, uh, listening to how they took in that information on auditing for the different towns and, and public institutions. And, uh, other than getting to watch some fantastic football and, uh, listening to some of the other, the other kids in the, some of the other sports are doing so well. Really proud of them. Our cross country is doing so well, swimming. Our, our volleyball team, wow. So, uh, doing really great. That's all I got.
All right. Jada?
I do not have anything.
All right.
Okay, um, concerning the advocacy, um, I couldn't go because band, marching band was that day and I had to make it so that a dad could go to marching band.
Mm-hmm, right.
Um, but one thing that kind of plagued my mind the whole time we were going to those in Zoom sessions was, okay, we learned how to talk to the legislature. How do we get the legislature to listen?
Well, there's a difference between listening and hearing. That's the way they, you know, and I think that if, if, I don't know, I guess a squeaky will. Hopefully, but I don't know. It's.
I'm not sure that we make the right pitch of squeak.
I think it has to do truly with, we have to work hard at making relationships strong with our legislators prior to us talking about school. It ha- you have to make that relation, you have to build that relationship outside of the district.
Outside of asking them for something? So how do we do that?
I don't, that's a hard, that's a hard thing, but I think we have to work at that and be supportive and, and comment to them. I think about other things that they're doing.
Be appreciative.
As well.
Yeah, it's the work that they're doing.
Cause I, I made the comment when we were down there that I've tried really hard not to be, not to be too mean about the legislature, because frankly, I'm not willing to do it. And if I'm not willing to put my money where my mouth is and do that job, I shouldn't be, I should give them my opinion, but I shouldn't be too hard on them because like I said, I'm not willing to do it, right?
My biggest concern about the whole thing is that we're being set up as the villains. We, so we're good, we have a twenty-five percent, uh, property tax that has disappeared this year for everybody. I heard a story about a fire district in a community that has announced that they're not doing these different kinds of services. And then the local insurance, what did you?
As a direct result.
Yeah, and this, and that an insurance agent in the community said, because of these changes happening in the fire district, you're, you're in, your fire, your home insurance is going to go up anywhere from thirty to fifty percent. So, you know, it's Pi- you know, Peter and Paul thing.
It's a Rob Peter, Kate Paul.
So the, in the next election cycle is a constitutional amendment to cut another twenty-five percent. So it'll be a fifty percent cut in property tax. Well, the pain like what's happening at that fire district is not occurring. You, you can't feel it yet.
No.
But it's going to start feeling and I, it may start by the next election cycle, but it's going to come and and then who's the villain? Who's the one that, that we get backfilled? And then, and they're gonna point towards education is the one who's taking all the money. Look at your, your tax bill and education is the problem. Education is, is under attack. Now, I don't believe it's an unplanned attack.
I would agree with that. I don't.
It's not accidental.
No, it's not accidental.
So the next election cycle, four years from, well, it's, it's, so it's, will be an amendment on the, to change the constitution about education. I, I, I believe that that is the angle, the, one of the strategies. So the, 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 the way that we affect it is by finding candidates who in the next legislature will be more attuned on how to make Wyoming great again, rather than blowing it up to make it great again. Because we have to start making it great again sooner than later. And that is our problem, because I don't think we can do it with this particular legislature. I don't, you, you, you can do what you want, but, you know, these guys have a marching plan.
From outside of Wyoming.
Very, some, some of it comes from outside of Wyoming.
One of the things that was brought up with regards to speaking to, um, legislators was not only just talking to them about things, that, other things that they're working on, not always just coming at them, just at the time, you know, building that relationship, but in building that relationship, because what Carl's saying is school boards are, we're, we're being looked at as, we're being vilified in, in a, in a certain respect, I guess, for better, lack of a better term. Is to make them be able to understand that, yes, I serve on a school board, but I am a grandparent. I am a community member. I, I, I am, you know, I'm an individual. And that those things, all of these things that are happening, not just the school legislation, but all legislation, um, affects me on, on that personal, make them see you as a human being and not just as that nameplate to, to make them see. That's gonna be a big lift to get them to do that, because sometimes, like I said, you start to talk and their, their ears shut down, you know, and they don't hear. And so we just have to find a way to try to bridge that gap, I guess. Um, I don't know, I'd be interested in seeing if Ellie had anything to say with regards to some of that legislation that's gonna be coming forward. Did you have anything to say about what Carl?
Well, I think it's a good, I think the best way to go about it is to vote somebody else in. And the way we do that is, I think grassroots advocacy, getting people who are, um, you know, rational and, uh, more pro education and public services, but more just like helping the community, helping the individuals, helping the children in the community. So I think, you know, working, starting now, you know, maybe getting some ideas, getting some names together, people that may wanna be involved. I think that's a good thing. Maybe younger people, I think would be helpful. Um, but the only way, you know, the people who are in the legislature now are not gonna change their mind. The only way to combat all of the anti-education legislation is to vote different people into, into office. And I think, you know, s- s- let's start working on it now. You know, I could talk to people, um, one of my, I, I always was, I, I was always thinking about getting Judge Young to run for something, but he likes, he likes his retirement. He's enjoying that. But I always thought Norman Young would be great. Um, but something like that, some, somebody who, you know, ha- has, is from the community, knows the community, knows, you know, the hardships that the community is facing and knows how important education is and, uh, the public school system to these very small communities in Wyoming, cause it's not, you know, it's everything. It's a big employer, big, uh, enter, you know, entertainment, you know, socialization and it's, I think.
Part of the community.
Yeah, it's, it's very central and to have it starting to, um, be attacked the way it is, it's really disheartening and it's gonna affect the children the most going forward.
Well, and I think, you know, we've had, well, tonight was a, an, an example of some of the good things that we, that we're having happening in our community with the sportsmanship award. Last week, we had multiple kiddos here through, um, to come and talk to us, um, with Key Club and, and some of the things. We had a parent who was present and actually thanked our, you know, our, our, our group and, and our, and our school for creating a, a place, a safe place for his kids to gain those kind of things and being able. To gain those kind of things and being able, I mean, we can sit up here all day long and talk about this and you're looking into this room. And there's not a whole li- large audience, right? So, we have to rely on too, um, getting that word out there, yes, we have other, we have avenues as far as online and things like that. But the press is really important for that. And, and it's really important that they, that they talk about the good things that are happening in our community. Um, that's how you build a culture of good things is by able, being able to do that. Um, so, I would, I would just hope that we could all come together as a community and, and. Start having those things out there because. I don't know if, if you have been attending some of those, the different things, you walk into a volleyball game, you walk into a, a, like. Go to lunch, you walk into a football game, doesn't matter if it's Froschmore. The, there is a vibration in there. That is very much the heartbeat of entertainment and things that, and you have people from all over that come to do that, come to watch. Um, you have grandparents of kids that come from, from Casper to watch their kiddos here. You know, things like that, those, that's out there. We just have to find a really positive way of getting it out there well enough that then our legislators do take notice.
And the, the other thing about it is, so, so the legislation may not always be negative about education. But it's about money. It's, it, it's, it's about money, it's, that's, that's the thing that. Even the previous legislatures has always been about money. So, this is not a. One-time deal. The only thing that has exasperated it is the property tax cut. That property tax cut has taken and pushed it and accelerated it so greatly. We have a s- a six hundred and forty million dollar deficit already planned. For the twenty-thirty bi- biennium. That's already going to occur unless something else changes. And right now, oil is starting to go, you know, it's all about minerals, it's all about. You know, boom and bust, it's all about that, it's all about money. And they have created a, it's, you know, it's not about schools so much, it's about. How are we going to change the tax code so that it works? And they're not working on that, none of the bills that you hear about. Talk about fixing the taxes.
I, I would say that I agree with everything that we're talking about, the, the good ideas that have been shared. But one of the things that I think is gonna be very important is that we dispel untruths respectfully. Last year, I was listening to, uh, one of the representatives on a committee talk about that, uh. Early childhood is not important and he didn't have any factual basis to back that up, he just said that and. I mean, I, I spent a lot of time in my career with early childhood and talking about why. It is huge, a huge foundational piece of who these kids are and you can make such a huge difference in a. Short period of time, it is just so impactful and a- all kinds of studies talk about that and so for them to just. Say that because they have a public mic and, you know, for people to say, well, early childhood, then that's not really important, why should be funded? You know, so to dispel those untruths respectfully and not just call them out on it, but just to say, you know, can I bring your. Bring this study to your attention to talk about some of these things. As well, we have people talking about how schools are not, you know, the Wyoming schools are not meeting the same standards as other states. Well, no, we're not because our standards are higher than a lot of other states, we could, we could. Where our bar is gonna be here so we can meet every, you know, every goal that, uh, we're, that we wanna meet so that we look really good. But that's not the goal for our students, we are saying, we're gonna set the bar here because we want you all to be successful in life. That may mean that, you know, we don't look as good as a state over here who set a low bar. So, again, just dispelling untruths respectfully and, uh, you know, I, I have, having that voice and I, I think, um. I think we need to think through how we can provide that information to our, uh, Fremont twenty-five, uh, constituents. How, how can we do that? Because you see a lot of things shared on Facebook that are just. Reiterating what, what has already been said, those untruths that have already been said and, you know. Facebook is not necessarily the place for you to, to try to, you know, get your message across, I think there are other avenues that are much. Could be much more successful and we just need to find those and be able to share some of those things for, for, and by people who are. Really good and knowledgeable, like when Thomas Jasmine came and talked about the.
Absolutely.
What happened and, you know, where our school district are and I, you know, I don't know that we necessarily are seeing that, our kids are doing really well. And we're continuing to excel and we need to make sure that we provide that information to our community so they know that, you know, we're doing some good things. So, just finding some ways to be able to provide that information in forums that are productive. And so, thinking through that might, might be some really good ideas. Getting people like Christina out there to talk with our folks.
The forums are the, are the key. How, there's so- such a multitude of. Different ways to communicate, to s- select people. There's not one, you, you know, put it right here and everybody will know it. You, you know, and of, of course, the ease, the best way to have a relationship is face to face.
I agree.
And so, if we can affect ten people who, we can. That we know, that will then tell ten more people. That is probably the most affecting thing that we can do.
And, and to listen.
Yeah, is be participants in the community. And tell the good things.
Yes.
And warn the bad things because the good things are here, but until we change the tax system.
Right.
It won't matter how good the things are because we won't be able to pay for it at a certain.
And we know that there are things that need to be improved upon and we need to make sure that we take that feedback and, and find what we can do to.
Done for, for us. And I don't mean just schools.
No.
The hole that has been dug for us.
I agree.
Is in the future and it's already dug. You know, we have, I think, thirty-three billion dollars. In a, in a fund, in a bucket that is not touched. And it cannot be touched. Much of the money that comes out, the, that is interest, that is how. Is in paying for a lot of the mistakes and the pro- projects that have been done over the years. That interest, well, that interest is because of the hole is now. It's, it's, we're, we're not gonna be able to keep up with what's happening. We are in crisis, folks, I mean, I'm, I, this is the worst it has ever been. This is the scariest moment for education, the scariest moment for our cities, the scariest moment for our counties. Fire districts, cemetery districts, it's the scariest time and we have to talk about that too. Because if we don't get that fixed, all the good things that we have. Can go away.
Yes, and when we talk about, like Ally saying, we need to elect somebody, some new, new folks. One of the things we really need to pay attention to this year is there are eleven election law bills. That are coming forward this year, you know, basically talking about election fraud and. There are some purposes for those, you know, to, um, possibly try to. To keep people in office that are already there, I mean, I, I, I just feel like that there are some of those pieces that might be out there. We need to take a look at those, um, I, I mean, honestly, the governor and that, this was on County Ten said. So, in essence, what these folks are saying is that all of the people that are in the legislature now were elected by fraudulent measures. So, now we need to fix it, which is interesting and, um, so, but, but that I think is a concern, we need to, we need to really pay attention to. The election laws, that, the, those bills that are coming forward to.
Well, and I encourage others to pay attention to that as well, like Carl said, if we talk to, it's a pebble effect, you pebble in the water. Talk to Ten and they'll talk to Ten and they'll talk to Ten and hopefully, you know. We can do some. Positive.
Does anyone know how our band did in marching band?
I got a third.
Yeah, I went and watched, it was really fun.
And it got money. It didn't get any captions this year.
They didn't get superior this year, but they got the right.
They changed the method of.
They did.
And, and there was some, but, you know, there, there was two categories, there was the open and the, I can't remember, but we remember the names.
I can't remember.
I can't remember, but one was, you could go in and, um, do it like. Where you actually get like a, a plaque essentially saying first, second, third. And, um, and then you could also do just a superior rating if you wanted to not. Do the actual placing. But they would also let you do the placing and give you a rating.
And Dr. Pink said there's a lot of young kids this year.
They did a good job.
They have a young band.
Yeah.
They did an awesome job.
They did a great job. You know, and I know that, uh, you went too. It was wonderful, it was, it's, it's always great, you know, watching.
It's a cool atmosphere.
The Thunder Band, you know. It, that, that's always awesome, it's, it's, uh, it's a fun thing to go to. Starts at one-thirty in the afternoon and goes till eight-thirty.
It's, it's lengthy, but it's, it's nice.
Programs. I think we should have a discussion about whether we wanna stay in the federal program as far as lunches, if funding. I, I don't know, it, uh, just hearing what we've heard from, you know, like you were saying, other districts are not in these programs. Well, there's, there's only a couple and they're small.
They're small.
Douglas is, is still in the federal program, but supplementing with, with, uh. So, it, it, it's, it's. I would like more information on the viability of not, of getting out of that, I think it imposes. Restrictions on us that are not in our benefit.
Powell was what, thirty-seven percent?
It's a little easier for a small district if they have a donation.
But we're, we're, we're not a small district, we're not huge.
But you have the option of going down on some.
It's like seven hundred thousand dollars, you know.
Yeah, it would be a million dollar hit.
Yeah.
Us.
To our budget.
To our budget, yeah.
Because we're already supplementing two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand and we would lose seven hundred thousand dollars with the federal funding.
We have to see how the, the lawsuit plays out as far as nutrition.
And what you have to provide, you know.
Right.
With that, that, that's kind of the, might be a wash.
Yeah, it could be.
A million dollars, that's.
That's a big hit.
That's pretty chunk.
But there was a lot of. That might be something we can look at.
But, that isn't gonna make up the difference.
No, not for that amount.
Okay, that's pretty much all I've got, um, do we have any visitors or delegations that would like to speak? This is your one opportunity for public comment or to address the board regarding action items on the agenda.
Gosh, did you?
I hope we don't have any mug shots.
He's gonna make one especially for you as chair.
Uh, we'll move on to discussion items regarding the Tonkin Monument Committee. Do, Carrie, do you have anything regarding that or? Good enough, I wasn't sure.
Hi, so I'm Kay Watson. Karen Wardner, I guess most, most of you know us. We're here just representing the potential Tonkin Committee, um, to look into options for maybe a memorial for Tonkin. Um, since we lost the memorial that we had down here. Um, we did share some information with you guys, I hope you had a chance to look at all that. Um, one of the, what we're looking at right now is just some answers to the questions that we have on here. So that we know if we can move forward or not and how to move forward, so, um, some of the. Ideas that have been kind of pushed around and there's been quite a few, but we're looking more at maybe phase one, might be the Tonkin Memorial itself. Um, maybe might include a picnic table or a gazebo or something like that along with the memorial. Might be a plaque, you know, it, it's kind of pretty much open right now, um, there's been some big dreams. That maybe it's an event center and it's a rec center and it's all of these different types of things.
A walking track and a park and, I mean, just a variety of things, yeah.
So, as we see, as we see it right now, we just need to answer these questions first so we know how to move forward. Um, and then we, like I said, we look at phase one maybe being the Tonkin Memorial itself. And then if there's enough interest and enough support, then maybe we would look at a phase two or a phase three. And however that would look, whatever that would look like.
If that's made available.
Yeah, yep, so, yeah, so the questions basically are, are what are the parameters for using the section of the lot, um, that you guys have allotted to us? Which is that corner, this corner? Right here. So, that, that corner right there, um, kind of what are the parameters? Um, as we move forward, what we need to do is survey the community and get more input, get more people involved.
Yeah, cause like we said in the document, we had a, a, I think, six or seven people right on the committee. And, uh, a couple of them said if it's strictly just going to be a monument, they're not interested in being involved. And we, we do, as we said also, believe that maybe the communication that went out to the community about trying to solicit people to be on the committee. Maybe wasn't as clear as, you know, maybe it wasn't as clear to people and so they just didn't even think they wanted to belly up for it, so. We would really like to get some more information out to the community and see if we can get more people on the committee. And then, and then kind of take it from there.
Cause as we all know, I mean, the Tonkin Foundation, the Tonkin Stadium, the Tonkin area is important to, you know, most of us who grew up here and went to school here.
Right.
And so, we know that there's, we are pretty positive, yes, that there, there are a lot more people who would like to be involved. Um, and so, we would like to get that word out and try to gather some, um, different input. But again, what are the, um, what, what would the board have to do if we move forward on this and we get enough interest? Um, what would the parameters would be with the board? Do the, does the committee itself form, report back to the board, do we do our own design? And then report to the board, what, what is that involvement feel and look like to you guys? So, just as we're moving forward, we would know kind of what we need to do. And then on, at tact onto that is, we're not gonna have any way to maintain this area, so if we put just a monument or something up there. Is that something the board would continue to, um, maintain, maintain the grass around it, that type of thing?
Just, first of all, this, what you just said. It's easier to take care of this much.
Uh huh.
Of this much.
Right.
So, the, the district would probably be very happy to maintain something like that. It, cause it's, you know, just like mowing lawn and.
Sure.
We're gonna do that any.
Yes.
When it comes to expanding the mission. Then it's also funding the mission.
Right, correct.
So, we do not, we're not planning on funding much of any.
Absolutely, we understand that.
So, then it becomes a, a conversation. At how far you can expand the mission. And each time you create a new line, then that funding piece becomes part of that.
Sure.
Conversation. So, that's what a foundation more or less does, it's, it's fundraising to. So, you come up with the, you know, and we can look at expanding. You know.
Actually, sure.
You know, so that's, that's sort of the, the synergy between a foundation like you, that we would like to see. And the goals that could. Come from it. Because as we were talking about funding just now, th- there's not, we don't have a big pocket.
No, we understand that.
No.
We might be able to donate, uh, some dollars to it, but it's donating to you so that it can be something.
Right. Yeah, no, and we, we totally understand that, um, but that, that's where we're kind of at is we're, we're, before we can move forward with doing a board. And setting all that up, we have to know that there's, that people are interested in helping us do that. And then, yes, we know there's gonna be people that have to be involved in planning, designing, fundraising, all of those types of pieces. But we need to make sure that we have. But we need to make sure that we have people involved.
The, the memorial.
Right.
You could grow it.
Right, well, that's just it, we're looking at phase one being that, and then if there's enough interest, then there's a phase two or three, maybe. You know, that's all potential, we don't know for sure how that's gonna look, and that's gonna depend a lot on the makeup of that committee and the people that are involved.
And what they're willing to do.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yep, yep.
Our initial goal was just this corner.
This corner.
And to make a memorial or something like that, something that would be relatively self-sustaining.
Sure.
Just mowed around.
Kind of, pretty much, yeah, because sustainability is.
Yeah. I mean, that's kind of what, that's kind of what we're envisioning as well, like I said, maybe, maybe a picnic table with a gazebo just to draw people over here. Have them walk by and go, oh, look, it's a monument.
And, you know, and it, and it may be something similar to what we had down here. Maybe some better material so it lasts longer, you know, that type of thing, um, I think that, you know, that, that's kind of, well, that's my vision, um, you know, we'll see.
Right, yeah, that's true, right.
So.
I just wanna say thank you for taking the lead on this and helping with that because, you know, I, I, that's a, it's a. A huge lift for you to, you know, be able to take that on and get people excited about it, although I don't think. I, I agree with you, I, I think it will be easy to get people involved, you know, I, I think it will be easy to do that.
That's gonna be a, a challenge.
We just gotta get the word out.
Right, and with your, with your first question, talking about does the board have to sign off on whatever is decided or proposed, I would say. You wanna work with the superintendent because of the resources that have to be allocated and those kinds of things, or people that need to be involved. You know, in the design of that, you know, we, we need to find out who needs to be involved in looking at those kinds of things and, and our, the superintendent would know.
Yeah, as that, and that for the parameters as well, because you know, you have, she has. They, they'll know the measurements of that area and be able to share all of that with you guys. And you know, with the Tonkin Foundation having had been there, um, and there was. A, a little, a few funds that were left there, um, as, when we first started talking about this. That was, that group was separate from the district, which is important because you're gonna go and solicit public funds. And, and, you know, from other individuals and. Private, excuse me, not public, gosh, I, that was a mistake, um, private funds, so that allows that separation there. Um, but no, I, I commend you because you guys are always willing to jump in and with both feet, um, and.
Maybe.
And I know, and I know, well, one, well, one toe in the, in the water, but, um, and I think that. As far as how you determine, you said you had five or six, how you determine how you get the word out too? You work with the superintendent to see if there's any suggestions that she would have, and then also with your group. As to how you want to go about that.
So, so one of the.
Our group was three, we had literally probably three or four people, maybe.
So, one of the things that, that we talked about was this survey, and so this is the last page, I think, of the, of the handout.
At the top of this is what, what do you think should happen with the memorial, to memorialize the Tonkin Bowl? And, uh, so that's kind of the next thing we wanna try to get out, that we're, we're hoping that we solicit more people to be involved in this.
Right, so then, the other question is, um, I don't know if the board has a way to get those surveys out, or if that's something that we would need to do. Through, you know, county ten or Facebook, we can talk to you, okay, good enough.
And your name is?
Yeah, cause we just, we just wanna make sure that we get the word out. And so I guess more than anything, just did the board have any concerns with what we are pushing forward, um, or wanting to. Or wanting to put out, does anybody have any issues or any concerns with this?
No.
The only thing I, you know, is that it's not just. It is the site of the, you know, second building in the free, uh, Riverton for education. Our, you know, our original high school that's set here, you know, I, I would like. I'm not on the committee, but.
Would you like to be?
This, this, this corner here was the first site, and then the next one was donated later.
Right.
On in the, in the district.
Exactly.
And then Ton- Tonkin was put here in thirty-three, thirty-four.
Yeah.
And when they dug the hall, the, the gymnasium was forty-nine.
Yeah, something like that, right.
And then the building was nineteen-seventy, so. So it, it's a, you know, a long, you know, it's, it's, it's been a phase and. It's, it's, it's a, an important site, historical site for the city of Riverton and those big twenty-five.
Well, I will say that one of the things that came up in, in the first discussion, um, when, when we were dreaming big, because we had no idea how much room is gonna be allotted. Um, there was discussion about kind of a, a founder's park. Or something like that, that, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of, um, families around here that were very much involved in the founding of. Riverton or surrounding areas and stuff, and so, you know, that, that's also a possibility because it is important, I mean, it's the Tonkins and they were, you know. First graduation I attended was on the front lawn, or they had the, I remember being on the front lawn when my sister graduated. And I, I, and they had, cause I remember.
You remember.
Pictures, yeah, I, that's the first one I remember, cause it, that's, uh, I was maybe five or whatever. But I, we have pictures out there in front of the school, in the original, in front of the original building, and they were. They were, I, I, I remember their gowns being white even, that's what I remember about that.
But yeah, I mean, and we could certainly change the survey.
Remember that, that's what I remember, but.
I graduated in the, in the bowl.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, really?
Did you have something?
So, what I was kind of envisioning in my brain when we talk about a foundation.
Yeah.
In, cause our, I spent a lot of years at the college foundation, and I can look back at the history of that, and it started small to support. The mission of the college, and in a way, I think this could eventually evolve into the same type of nonprofit. That could support different missions of the school district.
Right.
That the school can't, can't be involved in, you know, and that's always something that, that it could turn into. Long down the road, that's kind of where my thought process is, that, you know, sometimes people want to donate, but they can't really donate to the school.
Right, right.
For that, but they could donate maybe to the foundation and that, that board would, you know, work in tandem with the school to go. You know, this donor wants to set up a ice dancing thing, and he's gonna give a million dollars to do this ice dancing, well, we're like, whoa. We can't take that because, and so there has to be some parameters that way, but I think it's definitely a good way to start small and. And, and it's always good to dream big. And I a- appreciate you, your being willing to, to kind of take this on, cause I think it's important that we don't let. All of the good that came from the original Tonkin Foundation. Go away, and, and I do, you know, there's a lot of things we could honor and we could, we could do, there's been a lot of really neat things in our school district.
Yeah, and, and as Carl said, I mean, this is a very historical area.
It is.
Had a lot, a lot of people built a lot of memories here.
Yeah, so. So we can certainly build off of that on the survey as well, I mean, it doesn't have to be just the Tonkin Bowl, it could be the Tonkin area, the old high school. You know, I mean, we'll, we'll mess with that wording a little bit, make it a little bit more.
But Tonkin is, is, is important, I, I love.
Yes.
Everybody knows that.
Sure.
Concept, right, already.
Mm-huh.
So it's, it's a great name.
Starting point.
But it, it, it's a, you know, it's a starting place, and you're sort of building this, you know.
We're building the plane as we're flying it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Slapping the wheels on the bus.
You are, you're behind the controls of the plane while you're.
Yeah, exactly.
While you're re, while, while you're reforming the wings.
Yeah, there you go, right, right, yeah.
So, yeah, are you guys, um, as Kay said, are you guys okay with us moving forward with maybe getting that out?
I think it's great.
Okay?
Okay.
It just can't be, the, the school district itself can't be involved in.
Sure.
That part of it.
Yep, I don't think we have the school district mentioned in there at all.
Nope, totally understand that.
We're very well aware. And I apologize for misspeaking about private versus.
You're fine, but again, you know, we want this to be a partnership, you know, we, we want it to be open dialogue, we wanna be able to. Bounce ideas off of you guys and you bounce stuff off of us, and we're totally open to that, we just kinda, yeah, we just kinda need to know what our parameters were. You know, before we move forward, what does that look like?
We answered your questions.
I believe so.
Yeah, the only thing I had is that Jada, when you, um, put out that, that, the first thing to solicit people for the committee. I think that was on, was that on county ten or Facebook, or is that something that the school district could do for this purpose or not?
Well, we did share that on county ten, I think we paid for it to go.
To get it started.
Okay, so maybe not. I mean, if we're trying to keep this, if we're trying to keep it separate from here on out, I'm, I'm, that's fine.
I just know that some people buy, you know, some entities buy like a, a, a group plan or whatever, you know, like a bulk for. Through county ten, so they get six ads and they can use it for whatever they want, so I just didn't know if the district has something like that.
The ranger here that.
Okay, if, if you could let us know, cause again, we don't wanna, we don't wanna blur those lines.
No, I, no, that's important.
We understand there's lines, and so if it's, if it's permissible and the board's okay, that'd be awesome, if it's not, we'll have to figure it out.
Gentleman to your left.
Yes, we will, we will, we will be visiting.
And I think that's a good partnership too, is, uh, and the, you know, public relations and. But that she's our, it's sort of a district voice of some of that, and she has a direct, if you can't talk to the superintendent. She's probably a good voice.
Yeah, okay, okay, all right.
All right.
You guys have any other questions for us?
No, no, I, I just wanna say thank you again because I know I.
Fly! Well, you don't want that either, but we're, we're our best.
Thank you.
I am too.
Be tiptoeing. Yes, thank you so much for your time, appreciate it.
No, thank you guys, thanks for being so patient out there waiting your, to visit with us, so. Chop chop, my time's coming up.
All right, let's move on to the action items, um, first one is consider an administrative recommendation to accept a grant.
Mister Chair, I would move that the board accept the Wyoming Office of Homeland Security State and Local Cybersecurity Grant. In the amount of ninety-nine thousand fifty-eight dollars for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consider an administrative recommendation to discontinue group long-term care.
Mister Chair, I would move, maybe if I can read it here. I would move to approve the termination of the district's administration of the UNAM Group Long-Term Care. Policy number zero-zero-zero-three-eight-nine-eight-four, relieving the district of all future administrative and policy holder duties. And allowing currently enrolled employees to continue their in-force coverage via direct billing from UNAM.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just that the thirteen policy ho- holders are aware and.
Can keep their coverage.
And ready to, to take it over, cause I had a, uh. This, in my employee. But, uh, history, I had an insurance policy that, uh, I did not hear that it had been discontinued.
Oh, my god.
Then I started getting bills and then, what's going on here? It took a couple of months to get it back so that I continued.
Well, we'll make certain that that gets out to the people, it's only thirteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none will terminate that contract. Uh, consider an administrative recommendation to declare items as surplus.
Mister Chair, I move that to declare the nineteen-ninety-nine, is that right? Yep, Chevy utility van as surplus and be advertised for a sale through auction. And the twenty-twelve Klein Kiln from Rendezvous Elementary School declared as surplus to be donated to the Riverton Boys and Girls Club.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll go forward with that. We have some information items, the thankful and grateful chili luncheons is November fourth. At ten fifty to one oh five at Rendezvous Elementary, and November fifth from ten fifty-five. To twelve thirty-five at Aspen, and November sixth, so you got three days, nobody should miss this.
Or you speak all three days?
No, no, probably not. November sixth, ten fifty to twelve twenty-five at Willow Creek. Fremont County superintendents have organized a meeting with our Fremont County legislators. This is a good place to develop those relationships, on December first at six P M. Um, here?
It is gonna be here.
Okay.
Make that decision.
Okay, good.
Other, uh, superintendents were fine with that, so we'll do it here and we're not gonna do it dinner, we'll do, um, an appetizer.
Drinks and hors d'oeuvres and that kind of stuff.
So when you say here, will it be like at the middle school like we did it the other time that we did it right here in this, uh, okay.
Yeah, that is the plan unless something changes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have notifications of habitually truant, willfully absent and ten-day drop students, that's in your executive content. Classified staff changes, resend. Uh, Jessica O'Rourke as an RMS Para, resignations, transportation bus aide Christie Stagner, Stanger. Effective October fifteenth, Rendezvous Para Tanis Young Manning, effective October seventeenth. New hires Jennifer Stansel as an RMS Para, Jessica Leach as a Rendezvous Para. Shanti Gupta as a SPED certified homebound tutor. And Kayla Phillips as a Willow Creek Para, Brooke Trabing as a Willow Creek Para. Enrollment.
We stay consistent, so.
Fair enough, is there anything else that we need to discuss for the good of the board?
Carl, I was just gonna say that insurance doesn't, um, change over until February. We have plenty of time to get those, the staff notes.
Well-informed.
Ahead of that.
And well ahead of time.
I agree with that, I think that's important that we.
Communication. Relationship.